...Kenny, here.
Here.
Momo, here.
Notari, here.
Robell, here.
Struber, here.
President, Mayor Kimball.
Yeah.
We have discussions with the Kennedy and Florida along.
Yes, we'll go to the real fair. All right, first one is not necessarily smart cars, but you know, the inspectors have these cars that are like ten years old, they're outdated, they're gas guzzlers. I think we should look into getting a smaller kind of car because the town's only two miles wide for them to use. Like a smart car or like a Fiat, one of those small Fiacs. There's really no need for them to be right around those gas guzzlers anymore. When they're going out on their inspections and stuff.
Like a hybrid or?
Yeah, like a hybrid, American bank car, something like that, even electric car.
Like a standard American.
You know?
What kind of?
Electric car.
A little Tesla?
Yeah, Tesla.
Little Tesla.
You gotta watch on Channel thirteen what they did to the electric car, how they destroyed it.
No, I think it's a good idea, why don't we just wait for the budget gets put together, see what we can afford, right?
Yep. Number two is banner poles. We passed an ordinance banning the banner poles, but they're still up all over town. And if you go by the gas station on Bellville Avenue, they have the poles up there with the banners on them that are completely shredded. I mean, it's like a quality of life issue to look at. All right, that's my thing about banner poles.
Is the ordinance saying anything about the, about that or not?
Yes, it says you can't have them.
That's it?
Yes.
Yeah.
But they're all over the place anymore. All right, my third thing is GPS for the town vehicles. I think we should put GPS systems in all the trucks at Public Works and all the inspection cars up in, in code enforcement. I don't mean police cars and fire vehicles, but you know, the new GPS tells us where the cars are, how long they've been there, how fast a person's driving them. You know, I go by a place on Overlook Avenue sometimes and there's an inspector car there. I supposedly they're on lunch and at one o'clock it's there. Then I go by the place on Overlook Avenue again, one thirty, and it's still sitting there. So I don't know how long their lunches are, but I think it's, I think the time has come to do something, to look into it.
Can we get a president?
Yeah, we can. Okay, four, tractors enforced with authority. I mean, with the crime in town and the things police are doing, I think we should do something about, you know, hiring a couple of bar timers to go around and forcing parking, you know, around town. You know, like parking on, like the side streets and all and too close to the stop signs, especially at night. I mean, it's disastrous how everybody's parked all over the place. All right, my last thing was vehicles blocking driveways. On my house, on my block, especially like today, you have street cleaning. So what the people do that live on Hornblower, but the back of their Crockerly faces, Prospect Place, and also on other streets, they take their cars and they stick them in the driveway, on the apron. So now, when the sweeper's coming down, you can't sweep the street because you have to go around the car that's parked on the apron. And the people down the block were complaining that the streets not getting cleaned because every street cleaning day, they stick their cars sticking out. So I don't know if they can still be ticketed for parking, you know, when they're not supposed to be parking during the street cleaning.
I think you could get them for blocking sidewalks.
Yeah, you know, that's what they do, they stick them out and they're sticking them to the street and the sweeper can't get them. So there are my five things. I'll be fired at the next meeting.
Yeah, but we'll just notify the police on the blocking driveway.
Yeah.
They can get them for blocking sidewalks if we're forced to eat them in the sidewalk. So that's an easy one. The traffic enforcement authority, I don't know about that. But if we ever do create one, can we use the money that's generated? If we enforce, if we create a traffic enforcement authority, the money that's generated through tickets, can we use that to pay taxes?
Well, Mayor, that's controlled by state statute, if you're enforcing, you know, type thirty-nine tickets.
Right under the town ordinance, those are town.
Yeah, I'm federal for parking authority. Take a tap.
Who gets the parking authority, who gets the parking ticket money now?
It gets split up.
Pardon me?
It gets split up.
I think that would have to govern. I don't, I, my, without reviewing this off the top of my head, my guess is that fines, which they are, that are court enforced, a portion of it is already pre-dedicated to the court, to the state, to...
I believe it is, I don't know. Under the town ordinances, I think, I'm not sure, but maybe only five hours will go to the state. It's not the full ticket, under the town ordinance.
We'd have to ask the...
We'll have to look into it until we find out. What happens? And so for me? Do you have anything to add?
Uh, not really, I just wanted to alert, I have a couple of things that could come out in terms of the pre-meet.
Okay, you have anything? All right, go ahead.
First of all, I did, I think during the last meeting of the council, there was a discussion as to how the township could obtain credit under COA, the Council for Affordable Housing, specifically from the project that's being built behind the senior citizens, I don't know if the Franklin Development Group is building it. I did, I sent a letter over to their attorney and Mr. DeVellis, one of the principals of the firm, got back to me today and basically said that they would undertake to do whatever paperwork they had to do to forward to COA for us to get credit, but that the credit on those units is limited. For each unit has a person fifty-five and over to one half, you know, fifty-five up to whatever age, it doesn't matter. So if there are eighty units, the max credit would be forty, but we have to have a COA plan in place. I discussed that with the manager, the manager is going, I believe we've engaged Darlene Green to assist us in the preparation of a COA plan, so we should have that ready to go so that we don't lose the credits for this, for this project. I mean, it's, I don't know when they're anticipating the first tenant moving in, I think next year, as soon as the beginning of next year.
January first.
So, yeah.
January first is when the apartments are supposed to be moved and available.
That's correct. I think everyone has to be planned, placed by June ninth, I'm sorry, that plan has to be in place by June ninth? Uh, I believe it's June thirtieth in the state, yeah.
I don't know if the plan has to be in place or we have to file the declaratory judgment action by June thirtieth to let the court know, but nobody has filed those yet, so everybody's a little unsure as to what the form is going to be, that they want to be in compliance with the order of the Supreme Court of March two thousand fifteen, the opinion and the COA regulations.
I have a question, who's Arlene Green?
The one who came, did I have a page?
Her name is Darlene.
Darlene, Darlene.
Darlene, yeah.
Oh, I thought you said Arlene.
No, I thought, I could have, Ma Rae, I thought I said Darlene.
I was saying, who's Arlene?
But if I said Arlene, I apologize to her, I may have changed her name. The resolution number ten, Mayor, that you have in the packet tonight relating to the conditional appointment of the redevelopers, there have been some changes, this is an ongoing document. Now there are a number of attorneys involved in this, specifically representing the interests of Roach, representing the interests of the township, representing the interests of Tofra. We're going to remove Hampshire Global Partner LLC from the resolution. So I had another one prepared here for confering with Mr. Ray, and there are some other changes relating to the appointment of a conditional redevelopers that are contained in the revised resolution, you know, doing the new business, if that's, if that's okay with the clerk and the governing body.
We gotta pull that one and defeat that one?
I'm sorry?
We gotta pull that one, Kelly, defeat that one?
Yes.
I'm just, something really quick, Ray, on COA, in this month's New Jersey municipalities, there was a whole article about COA where they're pushing responsibilities for affordable housing. And what they're talking about is there was, I guess, three hundred and fifteen already participating municipalities that had certification. I don't, I don't think we're one of them, right?
No, 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 I think there were sixty, sixty approved municipalities that had adopted plans that were approved.
Yeah, well, they're saying approximately three hundred and fifteen participating municipalities are ready to possibly, those municipalities that have already received third round, is that, we're saying sixty-five have received third round?
Sixty-five have been approved, the plans have been approved. They formed in the second tier.
So we're still under the second tier?
Yeah. We're hoping to have a plan developed.
So we don't have pending petitions, right? Because they're saying, if those are pending petitions for substantive certification, we'll have it to thirty days from the effective date of the order or up to July eighth. That's not...
Oh, we're gonna be fine.
So that's a possibility.
Well, that, that other old resolution, Tom, is that, do we have our package already?
Say that again, please.
Do we have that resolution in our package already?
No, it actually was, was being finished when I left and came back.
We're gonna need to do something a little bit.
Yes.
Now, will this one, Tom, be explained, this resolution conditionally employing Tofra reality now that Hampshire Global is out?
They're gonna be out, yeah.
And could you tell me about, you know, those pages upon page with the number on the front, very difficult to read, would you explain it to me?
Well, the essence of this is very similar to the one that was created for Mr. Hackett's. The essence of it is that the governing body is continuing its negotiations with the owner of the premises. It recites a history of what the approvals were, the designation as an area, and also the approval of the redevelopment plan. That's basically, the history is the same on page one. When I did the resolution, I was under the impression that Hampshire was going to be a part of the, by statute, there is an entity that's required under the redevelopment law to be appointed as the redevelopment entity pursuant to the agreement. I thought that both Tofra and Hampshire were gonna do it jointly. Apparently they're not, and the Tofra Roman Two LLC is going to be the only entity. There is also a slight textual change in terms of Tofra having to satisfy the owner, the present owner of the premises in terms of its willingness to conduct environmental remediation and its capacity to do so. There has arisen another item that is a, has become a little bit of a bone of contention, but I think it's going to be ironed out. If you want to discuss that, we can do that part private, that's a contract negotiation. So the essence of this is that this redeveloper will be given a conditional appointment. You cannot do a conditional appointment of a redeveloper unless there's a redevelopment plan already in place, which there is, for this particular property. So the idea here is to, is to put them as redevelopers for forty-five days, see if they can come up with the appropriate financing if they need it, if they can do their due diligence, which they are already in the process of doing relating to the environmental condition of the property, and there is a provision in there for one additional extension. But after that, if this isn't gonna be done ninety days from today, it's, they're not gonna be able to do it.
Now, I see here that the mayor and members Cazarelli, Kennedy, Notari, and Robell presented this resolution.
Right.
Now, what happened to the other two?
Last time I made mayor and council, you screamed. Last time I put mayor and council on a resolution, you were bitching about it.
I wasn't talking about that about nothing, but I don't think I did that.
Well, I think you, well, yes, you did. You didn't want your name on anything.
That, that's part of the answer, I believe, I think part of the...
Why do I not want my name on it?
You said why should the board...
The first time you...
You did vote against it.
I did vote against it, that's true, that's true. But don't you think that the whole seven council members to go on there, and then when the vote comes, you see how it's gonna go?
You were, you were going to have to allow the vote on it.
Yes, I understand that. I mean, there's another one on the, on the houses that are being, that one, four, three council people, Cazarelli, Robell, and John, there's three. How come I wasn't asked for that? Did I go against that? I have it here, I brought it with me.
Want to talk to me again?
No, 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 no. No, I just noticed that there was, you know, three of them. I'm for rehabbing the houses and doing the right thing, but I wasn't asked. I am, I am a member of this council, whether you want me here or not. The only people that can get me out are the people that voted for me. And I just feel very hurt that maybe the other one, I did make a mistake, but at least on the rehab of the houses and everything, I think I should have been asked, that's all.
Anybody else have anything to add?
Hello? Make your motion to adjourn at six thirty.
Second.
I'm gonna go into private, discussing the transactional connection with the... That's, that's just a brief, that's...
Make your motion, we go into private?
Second.
Foot call roll.
Mayor, President, Kennedy, Momo, Notari, Robell, Struber, President, Mayor Kimball.
Hallelujah. To the flag of the United States of America, the civil public for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice that, notice that the meeting has to begin to the present public in accordance with open public voting form.
We have a presentation to Barbara Brown's squad.
Your sisters are here. Is Barbara's sister here?
Yes, they are.
All right, wanna come up? Let them be, vote here. Anybody wanna come, Barbara here?
No, not here, she's not here.
Not here yet? All right, who would like to, she gets you.
Okay.
Two more minutes.
Make your motion.
Second.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Momo?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Struber?
Um, sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me, maybe, yes. So, would you like to come up?
Wow, thank you.
Absolutely.
Just this time, oh, perfect time, it's valuable, this is, the people's business goes on here. Good afternoon, good evening, very well, good evening, everybody, residents of Belleville. My name is Theodore Stevens, I'm the Essex County surrogate, and it's my pleasure to once again come in front of this auspicious gathering of elected officials in order to tell you what the surrogate's court does. I made the promise when I was first elected in twenty twelve, Mayor Kimball, and that I would come at least once a year to all the municipalities and tell them what the surrogate's court does because, you know, so few people know what we, what we do. And as I mentioned to you before, I'll say it one more time, that when I was running for election, I would give my speech and I'd get two questions. One, what's your name again? The other one is just what the heck is a surrogate? Because obviously, like Freeholder and a couple other offices in the county, it's not readily apparent. But what we do obviously is we, we are the court. I'm a judge of the surrogate's court, the only elected judge in the state, and what I do is handle the probate of wills, trusts, and non-will estates. I handle the processing of adoption applications. I oversee the funds, thirty-six million dollars in funds in the intermingled trust funds minors. And I also, as I mentioned before, handle the increasingly important function of guardianship applications. And the guardianship, as you know, is when someone, an adult person, needs assistance, becomes infirm or through an accident or illness or some, or something like that, and they need someone to speak for them and handle their affairs, they have to apply to the court, because taking someone's rights away is very, very, very important to the court. So you have to prove their case, they need two doctors, they have to have a hearing, an attorney is appointed on behalf of the alleged incompetent person, and then after all of that is proven to the judge, then someone would be appointed a guardianship, a guardian for that person. I also have to mention, as I do, and for the public's interest, all of that may be avoided by having a five-hundred-dollar power of attorney that has been previously drawn up, placed in a drawer somewhere, that it becomes a springing power of attorney, would not be, become effective until actually needed, and that would, that would avoid the necessity in many cases of having to apply for guardianship, which is a multi-thousand-dollar application. Attorneys and as busy as Essex courts are can be very time-consuming as well. So I do recommend that for all folks who are putting together their estate plan, I know everybody there has their estate plan together, so of course I'm preaching to the choir there, but for those who may be a little less perhaps informed or else just get busy in their day-to-day operations. Now, part of the, I bring that up because the Supreme Court Chief Justice has made it his, his function, a very important process, made it a, I should say, an important aspect of what he's doing now, is to make sure that guardians are doing what they should do. Guardians must report to the surrogate's court on an annual basis, and so we don't know whether that's going on with the lights and watching that. So, I have some fires I'd like to leave with you at the request of the Chief Justice for a guardianship monitoring program, which is a volunteer program. We're looking for volunteers, and if I may address the crowd, we are looking for volunteers, individuals who want to do a service to the community, volunteer to look through records for guardians, to make sure that they're, the ward, the person whose funds are being handled by the guardian are being done properly. We provide training for that in order to make sure that's done, and it's very, it's done not in a way to impose upon an individual volunteer's time, can be as little as once a month, can be more, more frequent depending on their schedule. But we need some highly motivated and highly competent individuals because we're dealing with money in many cases. So I have some fires that I'd like to leave with you, if I may, to, in order to pass out.
One of the clerks holds.
Thank you so much. And it gives you an overview, but of course I'm available to speak to about that as well at the surrogate's court. I can be reached at, at the number that's there, or else at my website to get further information is www.esitsurrogate.com. So that's the main thing I wanted to speak to you about, to just to advise about our monitoring program and hope that perhaps you can support us in that effort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, sir, thank you for coming.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. One other thing I'd like to leave, I'm gonna leave with the haunted county administrator here, if I can, a little invitation for something, call me at your leisure, but I'd just like to leave that with you without getting into any details.
Thank you, George. I think Mrs. Scruggs is in the room, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Scruggs just retired from the Belville school system after doing twenty years of service. And you used to work at Woolworth's, right?
Yes.
When Mrs. Scruggs was younger, she worked at Woolworth's, and we used to go buy the banana splits and they were from like a penny to sixty-nine cents, and we had no money on us. She would bust the balloons and like, we had like three cents on us, and then it was a quarter, and then she would throw us out of Woolworth. Long time ago, many good times. All right, this says Barbara Brown Scruggs retired from the Belville Board of Education after twenty years of service. And Barbara Brown Scruggs retired in two thousand fourteen as a school bus aide for the children with special needs, which was demonstrated by her abundance of love and care for all the children. And where Barbara Brown Scruggs was born in Belville, at her parents' home on Valley Street, where she attended Belville School Number One and Belville High School. On July fourth, nineteen fifty-four, Barbara married Percy Scruggs the Third in Belville Park, had two children, Percy and Robert, who were also raised and educated in the township of Belville. And Barbara Brown Scruggs was active in several organizations in the township of Belville, such as the Colored Women's Club, the PTA, Club Scouts, the Brown, the Drum Corps, and the Summer Day Camp for Children. Now it will be resolved that the mayor of the municipal council of the township of Belville do hereby congratulate Barbara Brown Scruggs on her retirement, thank her for her dedication to the children in the township of Belville, and wish her many years of happiness in the future. Mrs. Scruggs, thank you for your service in the town and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, thank you. Congratulations.
Mayor, at a meeting today with Mr. Harris regarding the outstanding road projects, work is in the progress on the hotness, the curving, roadblock curving and sidewalk work is underway, with the expectations that it will be completed within two weeks. From that point, they're going to immediately begin the paving of the Friendly House parking lot. Anticipate completion date on that project would be June fifteenth. Then the crew will move to Giralliman Street, which will be the first street to be paved in town. June fifteenth, they'll begin the sidewalks on Giralliman Street on the handicap block corners, and they'll move on to North Place Carpenter Homes Ralph and Graylock. Other projects will be to plan later in the year. A generator at the Cedar Project, Cedar Building, is awaiting public service to come. They unfortunately could not get there on Friday last to shut the building down in the afternoon in the tower. We're hoping that this week they can complete that so that we can get that generator on track. That's all we're looking for at this time.
Mayor, I have a couple announcements. The first one is Belville PBA on Tuesday, May nineteenth, at seven p.m. will have a beef steak at the Brownstone in Patterson to raise money for both group of guests and hoping to help with the veterinary care of the animals, the dogs that work for Belville. Donation sixty-five dollars, and for ticket information, they can call Captain Meschey at nine seven three four five oh three three nine eight. May twenty-fifth is the Memorial Day Services, ten a.m., where they're gonna meet at the Rector Street Bridge, where they'll drop a wreath in the water for the soldiers that were killed at sea. Ten thirty, then they're gonna come up to the town hall here for the fallen police and firefighters. And then eleven a.m., they're rolling over to Bellville Avenue where the monuments are for the main event. And on Thursday, May twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, twelve noon promptly, Glendale Cemetery on Hoover Avenue, they're gonna honor a reserve of Memorial Day and dedicate a plaque recognizing the late Joe Fornerato, serviceman, activist, longtime Belville, newly-disabled American's veterans commander. The plaque will be placed at the Glendale Cemetery in the veterans burial area, which is owned by Essex County, or where the former memorial plaza was developed. Joe could always be counted off, his ideas that would provide action and draw attention to the needs of his brothers and sisters in the United States, our forces. It's a great pride that we are gathered to honor his memory, as well as the memory of men and women who sacrificed their lives and their country. And that's from Joe D. And as far, as far as Kevin, I have no questions.
Yes. First, I would like to thank our manager. After nine years that I've been working on the, the street, on Mayor Street and Garden Avenue, they finally, finally took two gentlemen out of the home. It was deplorable conditions, and Kevin, I thank you. Thank you very much, because I think we saved... Thank you very much, because I think we saved their lives. Along those lines, I'm asking that the mayor and council band together to help the residents who meet the income guidelines, to repair their homes with windows, siding, kitchens, or whatever is allowed by Essex County Housing and Community Development. If we all agree, a robo-call could go out to all the residents in the town. If the council is not in agreement, then, you know, I, I, we'll do it all because of the first one. So I'd like to know, Mr. Mayor, you know, if everybody's in agreement with that.
Yeah, I, I think everyone's probably in agreement. My only question is, what's the income threshold?
Well, that's, I have it down here, let me see. I'll get back to you on that, Steve, is that okay?
Yeah.
Because let me tell you, it's gonna help a lot of people, a lot of people.
The last time it was like thirteen thousand, a lot of people couldn't even.
Oh, no, 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 it's way higher than that.
Okay, good.
So let's get the information and we'll put it out.
So will you do a robo-call, Mr. Mayor? Okay, very good, thank you. At the last meeting of the council, a resident spoke up about the tapings of the meetings. I thought about it for a while, and I had a couple of weeks to think about it, and I, I know they don't want any residents on it, but I wish that, Mr. Mayor, that you would change your mind. Because I think the two that really are interested is Mr. Mattingley and Mr. Flintton. Um, maybe they have more input into this, so that's what I'm saying there. At a meeting of the council, I handed information on here, B and B, to see if we had an ordinance on allowing a home monitor, when his home had as a motel or a hotel. Now, Mr. Esposito, you said you got information on that, could you explain that to the people, please?
Uh, a hotel and motel use would not be permissible in the zones that exist throughout this town. There's a few motels that we have in town that are permitted through barriers. So, the code enforcement officer does have enforcement action to restrict that.
Okay. Because I know that, that we have one on Heckle, and I heard there, there are a few on, in the town of Belville, I mean, this is really ridiculous. It's taken our parking, it's taken everything, people are paying ten and twelve thousand dollars in taxes. So you're on that, right? You still members of thank you.
Yes, I provided them with the address, so that they can attend to, get an inspection on that problem.
Also, I heard from residents on Belmont, Cross, and Watchon about the conditions of catch basins. Recently with the rain, the basins are full, and there was flooding. Also on, um, on Newark Avenue and Belmont Avenue. Now, maybe Public Works can check, maybe once a month, because we're getting floods around there, Kevin, so if they can, you know, do that.
Sure.
Just a couple of more. 254 and 260 Belmont Avenue. There has to be about forty cars there, and they're just sitting there, they're on private property. And there's an ordinance in town, ordinance 236.12. The owners of the property were Anthony and Michael G. Brandy, and in 2015, it's Eugene Angelo from Bloomfield. Uh, there's no building description on the tax records, and Belmont Avenue is listed as a 1CB, 1SS, whatever that may be, I have no idea. No valiances to keep these vehicles, and the people are really up in arms, so if somebody can get on that, Mr. Manager. And the last thing is, the Silver Edge condominiums have concerns. And they brought to me yesterday, a big folder here, Mr. Esposito, with pictures about 124 Belmont Avenue, bamboo trees damaging the property, that is an empty lot next door to the American Legion, so it's a big, big thing here. So, anything you can do would be greatly appreciated, thank you.
Kevin, yeah, speaking of homes, um, what's happening with that house, uh, you and I spoke about it last week on, uh, Bremond Avenue, are we doing a clean-to-lean on that?
They went out, they did inspection, and the clean-to-lean will be in the process.
And what about, we talked about the steps in front of the house?
Yeah, eventually they're gonna clean, and the stairs, they're gonna be ready in a bit.
Also, 417 Portland Street, uh, there was a sign there for years, right in front of the house, uh, no parking here, near the corner, it came down during, um, hurricane, uh, sandy, but in the winter, obviously, we've been doing it without it. So if you can work on that, 4X417 Portland. And at the last reading, it was brought up with the PSC and G on Cromer Avenue, I know that you did speak to a rep back that night, I think he called you.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to know the status on that. Have you spoken to the, to the, to the?
I had a conversation with PSC and G's agreement, and they have a schedule, it should be done shortly.
All right, and also on a nice note here, we received a flyer here, family movie night, which is the first one, I believe, is on June 25th, Thursday, June 25th. The second one is Wednesday, August the 12th, a really nice event, um, refreshments, candy, popcorn. Kevin, how are you choosing the movies for this?
Uh, the first movie is, the Paddington movie is a children's movie, and we're waiting for the release, uh, the availability for the August movie, once we know the, uh, titles that are available, the recreation department will make a recommendation, and they'll get that sorted as well. We do have rain dates set up, should, should be, uh, in the weather. And this year, we will have a larger screen, we got a rest of about a thirty-foot screen, this is a twenty-foot screen last year, so we, uh, we already have a show last year.
What, what? We'll attend to that every, every Friday night, we do that on church street, a gigantic screen. I don't know if you've seen it, but it's something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a call today about 64 Jefferson, I know that it's often been asked about, is there any progress on?
One order, do we have microphones up there tonight?
Yes.
Is there any progress?
Apparently no one's using them, it's like a try for conversation up there.
Okay.
Through the chair?
The man across the street.
Yeah, Mr. Murphy, I spoke to Murphy, and I spoke to Sam Teague, who lives next to him. Um, I know Mr. DiLorenzo went over there, supposedly there was people going in and out of the house, it's missing the front fascia, but we're not sure, are these the bank people, or are these the people that took it back over? And that's what I think we're trying to find out at this point.
I'll have to check with Mr. DiLorenzo, I can tell you that the vacant housing ordinance being introduced, certainly, we get that adopted, that'll give us some strict enforcement action ability for properties like that, and that was, you know, quite wild to get that completed and has been introduced.
Right. And, um, how about the grass on the Great Lawn at Soho Hospital, I, I see the, I think that there's two pieces of property or something like that, is there any way that that's gonna be able to get maintained, or at least cut down, so it doesn't look so bad?
Councilman, that seems to be an ongoing battle every year, uh, there's more than two parcels there. The, uh, current owner of the Soho Hospital is in the process of the, uh, rehabilitation of that building. But the property that's always been on is the Great Lawn, is actually two separate parcels, and it's an ongoing battle. Code enforcement and the health department continuously contacting, I notified them yesterday as I passed it as well, and, you know, the holiday weekend, it'll be here before you know it. The grass is growing, we had a significant rainfall yesterday, the temperatures have been warm, the, uh, the lawns grow very rapidly with those conditions, um, I'll make sure that they get another reminder for it again.
And, uh, the last thing, Mr. Mayor, uh, under, um, resolutions on the table, at the appropriate time, I'm just gonna draw that, uh, resolution, that time of storm, is that appropriate? I'm done.
Yeah, uh, Kevin, I heard you say that, that they're gonna begin the Friendly House paving soon. Uh, is the company doing the drainage work over there also, on the sidewalks?
Uh, Bill, well, the sidewalks need to be done, uh, as far as the drainage goes, Mr. Harris has put a plan together with the drainage, uh, most certain.
Our guys are gonna do it?
Yeah. Yeah, our work is likely to get that.
All right, before we let me know when it's gonna go in there? So I could, uh, go up there?
Absolutely.
Steve?
Kevin, I saw that you have the, uh, resolution there about the regulator, do you have any idea when we can expect those parts in? I know people are worried about the water pressure, summer and everything coming.
Once that resolution gets approved, most of the parts are aside.
Okay, that would be great.
And the work crew is eager to get the job done, so that, uh, get the pressure line up, and some of the higher-risked line of neighbors.
Along the same lines that, uh, Councilman Longo and the tire was talking about there. The houses, the abandoned houses are part of our problem, but the other part of the problem, I came up with, like the pools themselves, like when you have an abandoned pool that, that just breeds mosquitoes and things like that, what, you know, can we find out what our capabilities are to either shut them down or take them apart, pump it out, whatever?
It'll probably come running, they're cleaned and, uh.
It's a health hazard.
Yeah, it's a health hazard.
Definitely.
But you don't know, but the question's, can we take them, in certain cases?
Well, even if we can disrupt the ability to hold water, mostly these older, uh, abandoned properties that have pools that are in poor condition, by simply, uh, puncturing the liner, you know, I hate to destroy property, but at the end of the day, if this is abandoned and is denominated, yeah.
I mean, there's two pieces to that, the health hazard is number one, and then there's the danger to children, who else should collect? Um, paving and drawing, we already talked about. The second, the southwest side, quite a high tension works. There's a bunch of construction trucks in there, I just wondered, do you give permission to them to park there? Across from, they go.
Across from there, isn't it?
On that same side, yeah.
Probably private agreements would be there, gee.
Yeah, it's something, maybe a lot of calls about that.
Yeah, that's usually private agreement.
I'm just wondering, I guess we have to find out from the PSC and G, what's going on with that? Okay. Um, schedule on the lighting, did you get any of that, any feedback?
We talked to, uh, the engineer in front of the charge of the project, they assure me that the commitment of having this section of Washington Avenue between Rector's and Belmont Avenue, we're planning Memorial Day deadline, it's on track.
Cool. Um, Carpenter Street, that one right side, where you, as you go down the street, I guess it's the east side, parts of it get cleaned, parts of it don't, can we just have the GW go out and take a look at that?
Uh, grass?
There's, there's grass clippings, there's other stuff there that shouldn't be there.
Part of the problem is that there's a section of grass that's owned by the Essex Department.
Essex Department.
And I think that their, their, uh, the last.
I, I just saw a bunch of other stuff there.
Okay. I'll remind you, the GW, the, uh.
I think it was Carpenter and Continental, we want to take a look at, if possible.
Mayor, I have one more thing, Steve just reminded. Kevin, who's responsible for those streets in Silver Lake? I mean, Belmont Avenue is like a war zone, Eugene Place is like a war zone, is that the way those streets are gonna be left?
Yeah, I think it'd be. Public service, uh, has a contractor doing underground utility work in the region. When they are completed, they will assure all the streets have been disrupted, and I sadly only ask for the paving contractors, as well as representatives of public service.
Well, what? I, I mean, don't, Belmont Avenue, they should be caved that.
Belmont Avenue was atrocious, and Eugene Place, you can't even drive down.
Oh, you can rely on that.
All right, sorry about that, Mayor, I think it's going to be on there.
Thanks, Kevin.
Communications.
Communication, A, 2014 Annual Report, seeing the Council of Belville going for the project.
Orders number one, introduction, and ordinance for members, invite general audience to the
township of Belville, chapter eight dash eight designated building.
Make a motion to introduce it.
Second.
Quick little.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Momba.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Kibble.
Yes.
Orders number three for introduction, as ordinance for members, invite general audience to the township of Belville, chapter eight dash six, Indian cat parking spaces.
Make a motion, move for introduction.
Second.
Quick little.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Momba.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Kibble.
Yes.
Orders number three for introduction, as ordinance for members, invite general audience to the township of Belville, chapter eight dash six, Indian cat parking spaces.
Make a motion, move for introduction.
Second.
Quick little.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Momba.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Kibble.
Yes.
Make a motion, open public participation.
Second.
Quick little.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Kibble.
Yes.
Oh, so, oh, apologies, apologies.
I'm Michael Sheldon, voice of Blood Street. Uh, just as a follow-up to what Councilwoman Bart was, uh, talking about a few moments ago, about advertising some of the assistance programs available to the state and county, and want the council to know the public as well, that on the website, there's welded information about these programs. If you go to the homepage, above the fold, second item on the left menu, it says assistance programs, county and state. I'm on the page right now, I think the program we're referring to is the Essex County Home Improvement Program.
Yes, it is.
And it says that if you meet the income guidelines for low and moderate income, you can receive a deferred loan for home repairs and renovations such as siding, electrical heating, plumbing, doors, windows, and painting. I have the phone number and contact, if you click on the link, it'll take you to their website with all the other details. There's another program, residential maintenance, it says minor, senior home repairs provided to eligible older persons who's held to safety or threaten the cause, uh, they cannot perform or arrange any services and are at risk of institutional placement. But those are only two of about, uh, nearly twenty programs that are already in place on the township website. So again, if you go to the homepage, the second link on the left menu, assistance programs, state and county, you'll get all of this information, so I just wanted everyone to know that it's there. Thank you, ladies, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, you know, we continue, we continue to violate the Young and Public Meetings Act by, under new business, it's constantly bringing in new business. The public's not aware of it, and the, the Young and Public Meetings Act said, the business should be on the agenda so the public knows what it's all about. On the April 14th, Mr. Murphy brought in to hire a lawyer for the Northeast Project, he suggested you table it that night, and, uh, you passed it that he revise it or something. The next meeting on the 28th, same thing happened again, it was brought up on the new business. Now, when you do that, if it's not on the agenda, the public has no opportunity to question and answer, and it violates Young and Public Meetings Act. Now, this council, previous council, ruled by twenty years' deep answer resolution, that anything that's not in the court's office by Thursday afternoon will not be on the agenda. And I know there are merchant matters, but, but this is touching almost every meeting, under new business, and you're shoving the people out, I believe illegally. Um, in regards to the Friendly House paving, and the follow-up to Mr. Cazarelli, I, I can't, in all due respect, Mr. Esposito, you know, with the microphone, you're a very important guy, said something about drainage. Is the drainage, um, I don't want to seem a lot paid, and then dug up a couple of weeks from now to put in drainage, is the drainage completed?
I'll confirm that, if there will be no black type put down and dug up, we'll make sure the drainage is completed before they pay.
And sidewalks are part of the project?
Yes.
To be completed?
Yes, sir.
Also, down at the old hockey rink, there's every night four or five Ashland tree trucks parked there, that's town property. Do they have permission to park their trucks there?
Yes.
They're there, can we get some, right? Um, the, um, in regards to what, uh, Councilman Kennedy brought on the pre-meeting, in regards to the banning, I was one of the objectives, and I'm for the exact same reason that you said, that down in Norton Under towns, and they're all afraid they're left there. But if you check the ordinance that you passed, you banned them, if I'm not mistaken, I think you put a, you put it for grand opening for thirty days, or fifteen days, I think there's, I, I don't know if you passed it that way, but there was discussion of that. But I, I agree, they shouldn't be up forever. Also, the other thing, the GPS system, this goes back several years, they're talking about putting them in trucks, and nothing gets done. I have suggested, what I used to do, every employee should put out worksheets, fill out worksheets. Every day you have your worksheet, your name's on it, the, if you go to a building or a location, where you're at, the time you punched in, and the time you left. Believe it, we caught a lot of goofballs by doing those worksheets, everybody was required. I spoke to Mr. Esposito a couple of years ago, if you want, I'll give you those, the hockey is the way we used to fill them out. And, uh, and in that case, I agree with the kind of, GPS will work. On one occasion, I bought a Mac of a vehicle I happened to follow about a year ago, remember Mr. Esposito? I just happened to be going that way, but this truck was just driving around town in a circle, going nowhere, with two employees in it. Well, I agree with that, I oppose traffic enforcement, we don't need authorities, we already have people enforcement in traffic, we're over the town. And another thing, I said, you're like you said, we can hire part-time, that's all this is about, that's all this is about, is about hiring people and doing something. Uh, we have a police chief, got a hundred-man force, and he can take care of these other things. He's getting a salary higher than the government, the government has dozens and not hundreds[1798.62]
I just wanted to ask Mr. Esposito, you mentioned about power being shut off at the senior building with the generator. I hope it's not going to be Friday. We have a party.
We need power.
We have your calendar. It would be on a Friday, it would be well after your party would be completed.
Okay, it's going to be this Friday. We have a party. And as far as the storm serves and everything around town, it's now's the time to watch the landscapers. Because last year, I had words with a few of them, and they weren't too nice when they answered me. They blow all the debris down the storm sewers. So there's where we have a problem. And I think they, as I say, all the inspectors going around, they should be able to patch them and give them a ticket or something, or turn the memory reporting to you. Thank you.
For Jeff White, Stevens Street. The park on Portland Street looks great. Just only the fence. If you look at the back of all the other homes there, it's a regular wooden picket fence. It's unprocessed. It's dilapidated, and eventually, over time, if it's not replaced, you know, we may have liability from the town as well. I also agree with the yard sales. But even more importantly, folks come in over the weekend, with Mother's Day, they have all those flower stands. There was one on Belville Avenue. So we don't know who these people are. And they also do not have permits as well, so. Last but not least, I think the town should recognize Vinnie Cosrelli Senior. He's been in, his family's been in the town for decades and has touched the lives of many families. I mean, after all, Danny DeVito has a street. I think we should, we should recognize Vinnie Senior. Thank you.
Thank you.
From Al Flesch, room one thirty-two Franklin Street. There is a tree on Magnolia that's blocking a sign about cleaning up after your dog. We had incident the other day. Young lady didn't clean up after her dog. Thankfully, the police were turning down Magnolia. They did speak to her. I don't know what happened, but the tree does need to be cut down so people can at least see the sign. You know, tree, too, man. I didn't, I didn't say cut down, sorry. Tree. Secondly, the
Excuse me. Can I interrupt and ask you the rough eye location of that sign?
It is right on the corner of Magnolia and Franklin. As you turn right onto there, it's the first tree, you know. Secondly, the, I know I mentioned this at the last meeting, but that corner of Magnolia and Franklin, it's becoming worse than the Indianapolis Speedway. The, after the meeting that Wednesday, I was sitting out waiting for my husband to come home. We were going out, and no less than two cars cut across Franklin and over the double line. So that was the two. And then, the best part was, two cars came up Magnolia Street, which was fascinating to see, but really interesting. And then tonight, as we were coming over, there was a car going, traveling this way. They were letting the two cars turn onto Magnolia, okay? Car behind them shot around, went to the right, zoomed around them, and right where the parking spaces are, where the firemen used to park before they closed the fire department, if they were there, if that firehouse was open and they were parked there, she would have hit at least four cars. Because she came this close to pulling, you know, pulling right up to her neighbor's car, hitting him like that. So that has to be, something has to be done. I don't know what can be done. I don't know if police can patrol it more. I know they have enough on their plates, but some things, somebody's going to get killed. Because they don't let you cross the street. You know, there's not, you know, they always try to zoom because the subway comes through, and that truck ties up traffic. People, God forbid, they wait twenty-seven seconds to turn. They cut across the double lines, and they're constantly cutting people off. We're constantly trying to get across that street. It's not, you know, very, very successful. And lastly, on the senior building that's being built, how do you apply, one of my friends asked me tonight, she knew I was coming here, about applying for residency in there. Is that through the town? Is that through the developer?
We're taking, we're taking names, and when the applications cannot notify anybody that gave us their name. But they're going to be notified or picked or chosen, however you want, through the developer.
Oh, okay. So she can just call town hall and put her name on the list?
Yes, in the manager's office.
In the manager's office. Okay. Thank you.
Will the manager call?
Second.
Quick little roll.
Councilmember Cosrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mr. Milber?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Yes.
Orders number two.
Move on to motion number five.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Mondo?
No.
Latari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mr. Milber?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Yes.
Resolution defeated.
Resolution.
New business.
What?
New business.
Yeah, resolution contingent, contingent of law.
Initially, appointing TOFA Realty Two LLC as the redevelopment for large diagnostic
area. And on the first, on the second page, first, second, third, fourth paragraph, where it says, whereas the township should be added. You got that, Kelly? Do you all know the premises as? All right? And then, as you read down, it says a connection with the appointment of a redevelopment and, take the and out. Right?
Is this the way to do it? Is this the way to do it?
Yes.
One sec. I'll second that.
Make a motion.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mr. Milber?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Yes.
Orders number two.
Move on to motion number five.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Mondo?
No.
Latari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mr. Milber?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Yes.
Orders number two.
Number ten's got to be defeated, because I'm going to read a new one, because something had to come out of, out of this one. So I'll read the new one.
Move on to motion ten.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Mondo?
No.
Latari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mr. Milber?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Yes.
Orders number two.
Number ten's got to be defeated, because I'm going to read a new one, because something had to come out of, out of this one. So I'll read the new one.
Move on to motion ten.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrelli?
No.
Kennedy?
No.
Mondo?
No.
Latari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mr. Milber?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
No.
Orders number two.
You want to do a resolution now?
Okay.
You want to do one, Mike?
You want to pull that off the table?
Yes, I would.
Make a motion, take resolution one off the table.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Mondo?
No.
Latari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mr. Milber?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Yes.
Orders number two.
Move on to motion nine.
You want to do one, Mike?
You want to pull that off the table?
Yes, I would.
Make a motion, take resolution one off the table.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mr. Milber?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Yes.
Orders number two.
New business.
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 And they also do not have permits as well, so. Last but not least, I think the town should recognize Vinnie Cogrelly Senior. He's been in, his family's been in the town for decades and has touched the lives of many families. I mean, after all, Danny DeVito has a street. I think we should, we should recognize Vinnie Senior. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
From our flash room on thirty-two Franklin Street. There is a tree on Magnolia that's blocking a sign about cleaning up after your dog. We had incident the other day, young lady didn't clean up after her dog. Thankfully, the police were turning down Magnolia, they did speak to her, I don't know what happened, but the tree does need to be cut down so people can at least see the sign. You know, trimmed, trimmed. I didn't, I didn't say cut down, sorry, trimmed. Secondly, the.
Excuse me, can I interrupt and ask you the rough-eyed location of that sign?
It is right on the corner of Magnolia and Franklin. As you turn right onto there, it's the first tree, you know. Secondly, the, I know I mentioned this at the last meeting, but that corner on Magnolia and Franklin, it's becoming worse than the Indianapolis Speedway. After the meeting that Wednesday, I was sitting out waiting for my husband to come home, we were going out, and no less than two cars cut across Franklin and over the double line. So that was the two. And then the best part was, two cars came up Magnolia Street, which was fascinating to see, but really interesting. And then tonight, as we were coming over, there was a car going, traveling this way. They were letting the two cars turn onto Magnolia, okay? Car behind them shot around, went to the right, zoomed around them, and right where the parking spaces are, where the firemen used to park before they closed the fire department, if they were there, if that firehouse was open and they ever parked there, she would have hit at least four cars, because she came this close to pulling, you know, pulling right up to her neighbor's car, hitting him like that. So that has to be, something has to be done. I don't know what can be done, I don't know if police can patrol it more. I know they have enough on their plates, but some things, somebody's going to get killed, because they don't let you cross the street. You know, there's not, you know, they always try to zoom because the subway comes through and that ties up traffic. People, God forbid, they wait twenty-seven seconds to turn, they cut across the double lines, and they're constantly cutting people off. We're constantly trying to get across that street, it's not, you know, very, very successful. And lastly, on the senior building that's being built, how do you apply, one of my friends asked me tonight, she knew I was coming here, about applying for residency in there. Is that through the town, is that through the developer?
We're taking, we're taking names, and when the applications cannot notify anybody that gave us their name, but they're going to be notified or picked or chosen, however you want, through the developer.
Oh, okay, so she can just call town hall and put her name on the list?
Yes, in the manager's office.
In the manager's office, okay. Thank you.
Make a motion, pause.
Second.
Quick little.
Councilmember Cogrelly?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes. Make a motion, move the consent agenda.
Second.
Yeah, number one and number ten.
One and ten?
One and ten.
Councilmember Cogrelly?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Number one?
Well, okay, number one, I just want to make sure that the purchase order fifteen-dash-oh-oh-nine-nine-nine, a tone invoice for five hundred fifty dollars to B and O Tony, is not paid because the insurance company is going to pay that.
Can you take that out?
Did you take care of that already, Kevin, or what?
No, we're going to pull it, it won't be paid.
Fine, then the insurance company is going to pay for that, Kevin.
Yes, thank you.
Just a second.
Need, um, can you move it?
I'll move it.
Oh.
Quick little.
Councilmember Cogrelly?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Move on to motion number five.
Second.
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Mondo?
No.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
You know, I was in parameter, I don't vote, yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Oh, God. Where'd you get that? Just there, just there.
I'm going to put on everything after this.
Hey, Jerry.
You want to take one more? Someone take one more?
Number ten is imagined.
All right. Number ten's got to be defeated because I'm going to read a new one, because something had to come out of this one. But I'll read the new one. Resolution ten. Second, quick little.
Councilmember Cogrelly?
No.
Kennedy?
No.
Mondo?
No.
Nattari?
No.
Robel?
No.
Jim Oliver?
No.
Mayor Kimball?
No. You want to do a resolution now? You want to move it, Mike? Well, you got to do this first.
You want to pull that off the table?
Yes. Make a motion, take resolution one off the table.
Second.
Councilmember Cogrelly?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes. Make a motion, move resolution number one. I think it's a good idea, we should look into it again.
Also, bring in the one. The one that says my corner is one.
All right, quick little.
Councilmember Cogrelly?
No.
Kennedy?
No.
Mondo?
No.
Nattari?
No.
Robel?
No.
Jim Oliver?
No.
Mayor Kimball?
No.
Resolution approved.
New business. New business. Yeah, resolution contingent, contingent of law. Initially, appointing TOFA Realty Two LLC as a redevelopment for Roach Diagnostic Area, and on the first, on the second page, first, second, third, fourth paragraph, where it says, "Whereas the township should be added." You got that, Kelly, the owner of the premises has? All right? And then, as you read down, it says a connection with the appointment of a redevelopment and to take the and out.
Now, is this the way to do it? Is this the way to do it?
Yes.
One sec, I'll second that. A second.
Quick little.
Councilmember Cogrelly?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Mondo?
No.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes. New business, huh? Now, some new business.
Congress reading it?
Yeah, we came back.
I have one more.
What's one more?
There's another one from the business.
It's in the files. It's confusing. It's the guy.
Yes.
Oh, the fireworks?
Yes.
I thought that was on.
No, that's something else.
Read it, Kelly, please.
Resolution authorized the agreement with Garden State Fireworks Incorporated for Fourth of July celebrating, celebration for the township of Bellevue.
Make a motion.
Second.
Quick little.
Councilmember Cogrelly?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Now, I can say, Mr. Esposito, I received this memo about the 2015 Elected Officials Online Training Reminder. I just want to tell you, I went through it and I did it. Thank you. Now, also, are you too? Also, what I want to say is, I am not, this is definitely the last time that I am going to vote for any lay blooms, because it's not fair to the public, they don't know what's going on, and I don't know, because I don't get read that fast. So I didn't want to stop anything, but that's all. Thank you.
John. John. Ken, real quick, I know we passed the bond for, we're going to put a fence on, and the Mary at that park, that's, I think the Mary can send us part. I also want to see if we can put up, you know, some sort of plaque there. So please, investigate what it costs if you do that, finish the fence if you're possible.
In continuation of the park on Portland Street, I asked the engineer to look into the bollards so we can prevent anyone from driving through. Also, all the.
Yeah, and now the wood fence in the back.
Yeah, the wood fence in the back. And also, we know it's.
Yeah, and do you have a good chance to talk to P S A about the spotlight, there in spotlight now?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Make a motion, turn. Sorry. Aye.
Aye.